Good evening, so we have more to do, more to discuss. Oh, and I am missing. I wonder if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Mathie.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Malumboy.
Here.
Alderman Burgess. Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Hallman.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here, thank you very much. We're going to start out with recognitions and appointments, and we're going to start with Mr. Robert, Dr. Robert Schulz to be appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Is Robert Schulz here? Thank you for willing to disturb. And I know she's here because I gave her a hug. Judy Buchanan to the Connect Transit Board. Judy, would you please stand? Reappointment. Thank you for willing to serve. At this moment, we're going to move to public comment, and it looks like we have a half-hour issued for public comment. And at this point, it's, I'm going to write this down, it's 7:34. We have up to a half an hour, and it looks like we have very possibly more people who will be able to speak. So I will read your names in groups of three. Would you please come forward? You have up to three minutes. And if you, I would urge, if you're repeating points, then please don't. You have the right to say whatever you want, but certainly the more new things that you can add, perhaps, the better. We're going to go ahead and start out with Louis, is it Goslin?
Goslin.
Goslin? Oh, sorry. And then Donna Gaston and Jen Correa. Hey, Louis, sorry.
Hey, no problem. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with the council. So in the last meeting that just happened, there was some discussion about this PSCRB, which is something that, I don't know how many times I've been in this room and seen this room packed wall-to-wall with people who want to see this thing. But one thing keeps getting mentioned time and time again, and it's coming from Alderman Sage on his tablet, who smirked during some of the presentations from people up here who were trying to explain a problem to you. And the problem isn't a problem of perception. You said, "From your perspective, you think this is a solution in search of a problem." The problem is clear. The Stevenson Center issued a full report based on the problem. The problem is that there is an obvious disproportionality in the enforcement that is received by people of color in this community. And no matter how much you want to deny that, the problem is there. In fact, it's been described as fact. It's been studied. It's been researched. These aren't just people's stories. Now, throughout the last presentation, I heard from the chief that there are different organizations that could just help people through the complaint process. Every organization that he mentioned are organizations that are saying that this process isn't good enough, that we need a CRB. And so, one thing that I want to point out, though, is that various organizations have met with every single member of this council. In fact, I've met with most of you as well. And the last time that we were together, this council said, "This is a good idea. It's something that we should consider going forward with." In fact, there was even some pretty, you know, courageous statements about making sure that this PSCRB includes everyone regardless of past criminal record. The only person who hasn't expressed any interest or support has been you, Council Member Sage, and you are also the only one that I haven't met with. In fact, everyone on this council has had an open willingness to at least explore this idea. And so, Black Lives Matter Bloomington Normal, a group that I volunteer with, has asked you four different times if you'd be willing to meet, and every time you've rejected that. And so what I'm saying is if you're, if there's a problem about perception and what's actually real and what's not in this community, I think the problem lies in an unwillingness to acknowledge it and even meet with people to discuss it. Because again, I don't know how many people have to fill this place time and time again telling you that this is something that they want, but one thing that's important to remember is that policing is a public service. You are public servants, and the public keeps coming to you and saying this. Nine different organizations, major organizations in this community are behind this and are not going to let up. So no amount of delaying, stalling is going to keep this problem from going away. No amount of denial is going to solve this, and no amount of waiting is going to keep us from coming forward and demanding a solution to a problem that is very real, whether or not you want to acknowledge it.
Thank you. Donna Gaston, Jen Correa, and Ruth Haney. Again, Donna Gaston, Jen Correa, and Ruth Haney.
Good evening. I want to appear on behalf of my son Eric, who is handicapped, and he had a very frightening experience with the police last couple of weeks ago. Now, we all know that when the police stop someone to check and see if they're okay or if they're all right, we appreciate that. And sometimes it's necessary, and many lives have been saved because of that. But in Eric's case, after he told her he was okay, he wasn't drunk, and that he was handicapped, he still was detained for a few minutes and put through some things that really frightened him. And I'm not saying that she put her hands on him or that, or any of that thing, but we need to all work as hard as we can to create an environment where a person is not stopped solely on their disability, just solely on their disability. Because if they had told Eric to stand on one foot, he couldn't do it. If they said, "Don't move," he couldn't do that because of his disability. And there are six rules in the federal guidelines that says when you can be stopped and frisked are just stopped. And I've told my kids, if you cross that line, disabled or not, the police have a right and a duty to stop you. But if you're peacefully walking down the street, and that's what he was doing, peacefully walking down the street, and after they ran his, after the officer ran his ID and everything, she didn't find anything on him, because that's the way I've raised my child. But he can't help his disability. And I want all of us in this community to work together to create an atmosphere where a citizen feels comfortable and safe walking down the street or walking anywhere without being detained, slowly or having a police-initiated encounter based solely on their disability and not by their actions or their attitude or whatever they're doing. Because handicapped people have enough challenges and things to go through during the day. And I didn't sleep for two nights because I thought, he reached in his pocket and got his ID, I didn't want him to become one of those statistics that said, "I feared for my life, and now he's not here." You know, because he didn't know what to do. He was just walking into the water company to pay a light bill. That's all he was doing, walking down East Street. And I'm trying my best to keep the emotion out of my voice and just give the facts, but we need to all work towards that. And that's why I'm in favor of a citizens' review board, you know? And it protects the police as much as it does the citizens. It's a balance for all of us, you know? And it's not just the favorite one against the other because
I'm sorry, your time is up, ma'am.
Sometimes you can be their best ally if someone's wrong. And when my kids are wrong, like we learned at home, fess up when you mess up, because that's the only way to take it back, you know?
Thank you very much. Ruth Haney, Leon Cab, and Sophie Charles. I'm sorry, Jen Correa was in front of you. I apologize. I messed those up. You're next, Ruth.
Mayor and City Council, I've been called many things in my life, some of them by people on this council, aggressive, an agitator, a bully, a radical. Some of you have accepted these descriptions about me, but few know who I am or what I'm about or why I fight for what I do. So I've come to share my story with you today. As a Latina immigrant, I have witnessed my family be referred to as wetbacks and SPICs and be racially profiled, humiliated, and denied privileges that others are given freely. I am one of those people who have not called the police at times when I needed help. I am one of those people who feels terror during a traffic stop, who says to myself, "This won't happen to me," but then wonders if Orlando Castillo or Sandra Bland thought the exact same thing. Though I bear the privilege that my light skin affords me, I have seen firsthand how the dark-skinned people in my life fare in comparison to me. I'm also educated, and I know the facts. I know that in Bloomington, black people are twice as likely to be pulled over by the police, and once stopped are twice as likely to be searched compared to white people. I know that on any given day, black people make up 32% of the population of McLean County Jail, which is highly disproportionate, given that they only make up 8% of the county's population. These statistics are signs of systemic racism at work, and yes, that makes me furious. But more than anything, the reality of how black and brown people are treated in this country and in this community makes me sad. It hurts me at the deepest level, and it hurts me that there are people who call themselves good and feel comfortable in doing nothing about it. In spite of all that hurt, though, I have an unshakable faith that we can do better, and this is why I fight. I think all of us should be in the fight against racism, a system of oppression that destroys black and brown people and makes white people complicit in that destruction. But the first step to addressing racism and to addressing any problem is acknowledging that it exists, that it's not perception but reality, that people of color in our community are criminalized in ways that white people are not. It's recognizing that the nature of racism is systemic, institutional, and pervasive, which means that it operates at every institution, at every level, without our intention, including the police department. Acknowledging that this is a problem is not an indictment of the character of the people who serve at BPD. It doesn't mean Brendan Hefner is a bad chief of police or a bad guy. It doesn't mean that any of you, Jamie, David, Mboka, Amelia, Johnny, Karen, Scott, Diana, Kim, or Terry are bad people. It's what you decide to do with this information that matters. It's the choices that you make with this knowledge, that this is happening under your watch, that will determine how you go down in history. A civilian review board isn't going to solve the problem, but it's a really good place for us to start. I know that you didn't create racism, but make no mistake, it is absolutely your responsibility to do something about it. So let's start to bridge this divide by giving those who are most directly affected the power to help shape what policing looks like in this community. Council members, we may disagree on some things, but know that I see you, that I trust that you're in this for the right reasons, and that I have faith in your goodness and in your courage. Know that I believe in your capacity to do the right thing with the power that you hold in your hands. I believe that you're loving people. Just don't forget that justice is what love looks like in public.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ruth Haney, Leon Cab, and Ruth Haney, Leon Cab, I believe it is, and then Sophie Charles, excuse me.
Hi, I'm Ruth Haney, and I'm here to speak on the bicycle lane that is supposed to start at Lee Street and go out to the St. Joseph's. And I feel, after going to the meetings, I feel the decision has already basically been made. So I'm not against the bikers, and I'm, but I am concerned because of the considerable traffic on Washington Street. It's a street that I use every single day, and not one time, but many times. Both of my husband and I attended the different public comment meetings, and we voiced our concerns, so I won't be redundant. But I hope that the council will not see this as a black-and-white situation or vote, and will consider how this will affect some of the different blocks along that Washington Street. That is, my main concern has to do with the 400 block of West Washington, where we own the buildings on both the north and side, the north and south sides of the street. And we have put considerable money into those buildings to get them back up and occupied and for the city. And I am afraid that what's going to happen if you add the bike lane, that it's going to affect our parking. I'm afraid that, right now, we have two lanes and two places to park, and if you take away that parking, it's going to basically take all my parking away for the business that is on the north side and the school. It is imperative, the Regional Alternative School has that bus lane there. They are there not just one time a day, they are there from the morning, and it's not just one bus. It's buses from all different areas of all the towns surrounding that are dropping off kids. They're not there just the morning, they're there in the afternoon, and they're there in the evening to pick them up. Those bus drivers come in, and sometimes those buses sit there for a half hour at a time. I can park on the side, the north side, the north side of the street when those buses are sitting there, and if a city bus comes in, it's a tight squeeze just to see how those buses, I won't even get out of my car until the traffic is by. So that does concern me. And I hope that you will see this instead of a black-and-white situation, that you will look at how this is going to affect some of these areas and compromise with us on, there are going to have to be some areas of that street that it's going, they're going to have to share that lane with us. Now, after talking also to Jim Karch, he was talking about what they, what they measured on how many bikes were along the street. And I asked him if he had measured the bikes that was cleared down to Lee Street, and he said, "No, they had measured the ones on the east side." So I'm not even too sure it's going to, you're going to even see that much traffic along that 400 block, which is the first block that is in this, in that section.
Ruth, I'm sorry, your time's up.
I know, thank you.
Thanks. Next is Leon Cab, I believe, and then Sophie Charles and Josh Lewis. We have Leon, Sophie Charles, and then Josh Lewis and Jennifer Johnson.
Good evening, I'm Sophie. I live on West Market Street, and I am here to support, voice my support of the proposed civilian review board. Alderman Sage, I am here to share with you my problem in search of a solution. I filed a complaint with BPD, and it was intimidating, placating, threatening, and dissatisfying. Two summers ago, my partner Henry and I witnessed an occurrence of police misconduct half a block away from our home. The incident involved a man who, along with his wife and two-month-old baby, was monitoring the scene of an incident involving a group of youth that the police had been called to respond to. We were witnesses as this man was stopped and questioned by officers. We saw him indicate in several ways to officers that he needed accommodation due to being deaf and have that request ignored by officers. We saw officers quickly escalate the situation to the point of handcuffing him. We had officers refuse to disclose the reason for the arrest to witnesses of the arrest, as well as officers refusing to give their badge numbers until pressed numerous times. We saw officers then put him in the back of the police van and then taken to the jail, leaving his wife and infant stranded on the street corner. We were extremely troubled by BPD officers' behaviors and concerned for the fate of this man who had gotten caught up in a situation he did not deserve. We knew we had to file a complaint. We spent the entire next day at BPD and the state's attorney's office attempting to file a complaint and to halt the proceeding of criminal charges that were being unjustly brought against our neighbor. I felt intimidated from the moment we stepped into BPD to file our complaint, and again, as the officer assigned to take our statement first took our names and dates of birth to run background checks, indicating from the outset that, "You're coming to complain something about us, but we are checking into you first." This was very much seen as an intimidation and undermining tactic as we came to file our complaint. I felt placated as we shared our account of a serious civil rights violation that we'd witnessed first, first with the intake officer, then Assistant Chief Subbyland, and then with Chief Hefner, only to be met with the same stock response that they needed 30 to 60 days to do their investigation. Meanwhile, the man that was stopped would be facing his criminal charges within 25 days. I was threatened when, within a couple of days of filing our confidential complaint, the same police van that had arrested the man that night was now parked across the street from our house.
I'm sorry, your time's up, Sophie. Apologize.
I was also dissatisfied when we got the letter back that said that it was unfounded and that the officers were exonerated of wrongdoing. We need a civilian review board.
Thank you. Josh Lewis, Jennifer Johnson, and Kaia Jai.
My name is Josh. I'm a 13-year-old student at Bloomington Junior High School. I live in Ward 2. Council Member Sage is my alderman. Last December at a Black Lives Matter, sorry, last December at a Black Lives Matter public meeting, I told my story about getting racially profiled by BPD to Chief Hefner and about 400 other community members. I told about how my driver, who was white, was taking me to my summer job, and how we got pulled over about two blocks away from my home. And I explained that even though my driver didn't have his license, the officer ignored him and focused its attention on me and questioned me about car theft in the area. I wasn't even driving. After he was done with me, the officer let us go without giving the driver a ticket. When he left, I was happy but confused. I got angry when I realized what had happened. This was profiling. After my story went public, many questioned why they didn't submit a formal complaint. My question to them is, "How could you expect me to trust the law enforcement after being profiled like this?" Since December, many of us have shared our stories directly with Chief Hefner, and still there has been no policy changes or justice delivered by BPD, not even an apology. What makes you think they would have done something about it then? I was treated unfairly, criminalized based on the color of my skin. Just because I didn't file a complaint doesn't mean it didn't happen. Council Member Sage, you described PSCRB as a solution in search of a problem. I'm glad you recognized the PSCRB as a solution, but I'm telling you right now, there's an obvious problem, and some of us don't have the privilege to deny it. You are my alderman, and it is insulting for you to deny my truth, our truth. You ignore the data backed up, sorry, you ignore the data that backs up our stories, just like you ignore a repeated request to meet with you, making you the only member on the council who hasn't met with us. You may have the white privilege to deny the problem, and you may have the power to avoid a vote, but no amount of denial will keep this from being a problem for me and for countless others. And no amount, and no amount of avoidance will solve it. I'm counting on you to step up and use your leadership to name the problem of the PSCRB. Thank you, and have a nice day.
Sorry, Josh. Okay. Jennifer Johnson, Kaia Jai, and Barbara Finley. Jennifer Johnson?
Good evening. It takes a village to raise a child, and I was born and raised right here in Bloomington, Illinois. Aria and I attended the last city council meeting, and she was terrified of the police officers in attendance. She was afraid that they were going to shoot us. She's four years old. Please understand that we are not against the police, we have officers in our family. However, with what has been reportedly repeated on the news and from my own personal experience, it is hard for us as black people to not be afraid of them. I do not want my children to have to live in fear of those who have taken an oath to protect and serve us. Chief Hefner met my daughter at the last meeting, and he gave her some reasonably sound advice. Rather than saying, "Police are your friends, trust the police," he said, "You should not judge people until you get to know them, not even the police." They became fast friends. And that is what I feel this community review board can provide for us. You are mistaken if you feel that this is meant to actively harm our officers. This should not be an us-versus-them thing. This community review board is meant to bridge the gap so that we can come together to know the officers in our community and so that they can come to know us, rather than continue to judge each other unfairly based on news propaganda that promotes fear and hate on both sides. Something must be done to actively heal the trust between police and civilians, and it starts right here at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaia Jai, and then Barbara Finley Stewart and Heather Johnson.
Good evening all. No. Kaia Jai here, representing Black Lives Matter. I had some prepared statements prior to the chief's presentation, and I'm disappointed that the questions I had before his presentation have still not been answered. So let me just rush through this because I have some new stuff based on what we've heard so far. There's a point that's been missing, and I think this drives your lack of understanding of the PSCRB and what it's supposed to do. Here it is. The main focus of the proposed PSCRB is to improve community trust. How? By alleviating the impression that, and this is critical, the police complaint investigation process is flawed. It's not about where do you go and get a piece of paper. It's about what happens when you submit the piece of paper and the police investigate themselves. People don't have trust in that. Secondly, retaliation. Complainants will be retaliated against, not when you hand in the form, but after you hand in the form and the police talk about it amongst themselves and decide, "We're going to come sit outside your house when we're off duty at midnight." That's the retaliation, not when we hand in the form. It doesn't matter which organization has the form, it doesn't matter where you can go and get it to hand it in, it's what happens after it's handed in and how is it investigated. So I was hopeful that the chief's presentation today would yield some new information. I had some suggestions. Here's, "How exactly would a review of BPD community outreach and educational programs address the integrity of BPD complaint investigation? How would a review of the complaint submission process address the integrity of the complaint investigation process?" To be clear, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Sage, community concerns resulting in the call for a CRB primarily resolve around the complaint investigation process. I can't say this enough because it seems to have been missed. I have some other stuff I wanted to say in my prepared comments, but let me respond to a few items that were said today. Tens of thousands of incidents, you said, have occurred in this community, yet we had 31 and 30 and 17 complaints. That indicates there's no problem? No. You've heard data that says there's disproportionate targeting of people of color, and they don't complain. Why? Because they don't trust what happens after they submit the complaint. The chief compared his department to a business. You can choose which business you go to, and if you don't like the service, you get to complain. Many of us don't have a choice about which community we live in. Finally, you said you heard some new information. Your mayor, our mayor tasked the board members to do their homework. When I heard that, I went and did my own. There's nothing that was on this screen that is not public information. Had homework been done, you would realize you heard nothing new today. You heard about a process that, a complaint submission process is not the issue. You heard about education program, it's not the issue. Police investigating themselves, that's the issue.
Okay, we have Barbara Finley Stewart and Heather Johnson. Technically, we're supposed to be done in about four and a half minutes, so if you could be under budget, that would be great. Barbara?
Thank you.
Up to three minutes.
I founded the, and chaired, the Complaints About Police Committee from 1998 to 2004. In talking about having an ex-offender or a police officer as a member of the board, it's important to consider that this is not a policy board like Minorities and Police Partnership, which drafts policies and works to ease general misunderstandings. In such a board, the police necessarily make up half the membership. But the police membership Although the proposed board may suggest complaint policy changes, it primarily acts more as a trial court. As in a court of justice trial, this is a single case where the solitary citizen has no basic power other than the law. In this case, the law is chiefly the police-written complaint policy, which gives the police total power if there is no review board. So, in a sense, the review board now becomes a sort of defense attorney since it offers support or a measure of power to the citizen. This improved balance would bring about better understandings on both sides, which should resolve the complaint. There's one obvious difference. The police officer who's the target of the complaint is also on trial. This helps move some of the weight of power toward the center, and I expect the police view this as a danger to their powers. But the danger is very small; it'd be only more than two or three of these cases a year, probably. I doubt that black, Hispanic, or Muslim citizens would bring a complaint to the board unless they had good reason, in which case the police would should welcome the information. If there is a vengeful motive for the complaint, chances are this motive would be quite evident and render the charges meaningless. But the police department with its self-created policy would still retain a hefty balance of power in a complaint case regardless. With this in mind, adding a police officer to the board, even a retired officer, would simply push the balance back in the direction of the police. It seems to me that this would cancel the meaning of having a review board in the first place, since it is the board that will keep the minority citizens from being powerless. Thank you.
Heather Johnson. And I apologize to those of you who were unable to speak this evening.
Hello. I support the civilian review board, but at this time, I would like to cede my time. Thank you.
Unfortunately, you can't, according to our rules.
Oh, okay.
It has to be you.
Okay. Well, hello. My name is Heather Johnson, and I was born and raised in this community. I worked with diverse populations of people in this community as well. I've worked with women and children who have experienced domestic violence, as well as women who have experienced sexual assault and, by association, law enforcement. I also volunteer for a number of organizations, and am an MCLP, two twenty-seventeen graduate and a Leaders of Distinction Award winner in twenty-seventeen. I care a lot about this community and its residents, and I want to give perspective on why it's important for us to have a civilian review board for Bloomington. So, first, what I would like to explain is, I think, our overall problem of racism. So, how difference gets constructed against what people think is normal? Normality tends to reflect the identity of those in power. Social ranks differences and institutionalizes them into the fabric of society. Institutionalized means being placed into a structured system or a set of practices. In this ranking, our society means that thin is better than fat, economically privileged is better than poor, able-bodied is seen as better than disabled, masculine is seen as better than feminine, and white is seen as better than black. This implies that meanings associated with differences exist beyond the intentions of individual people. These rankings of groups and their members create a hierarchy in which some ways are being valued more than others. So, there has never been a point in our history where white people have systemically and institutionally valued black lives as we do our own, and that's why we say, "Black Lives Matter." People are afraid of retaliation because police officers have power over civilians, and they're afraid after filing the complaint, if you don't feel safe in the first place, if you don't have safety and you don't feel safe, you're not going to feel safe filing a complaint or speaking with a police officer no matter where they want to speak, regardless of whether it's the police station or another place in the community. So furthermore, some people have advantages in accessing resources, and the ranking of such differences is constructed through societal social processes, such as patterns of differences, that become systems of privilege and inequality. And I'm almost out of time, but I support the civilian review board due to structures of inequality, and I know that we didn't set up these systems.
I'm sorry, your time is up. I apologize.
But you have the opportunity to change that, and I think it would be a great step in the right direction.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're going to move right along to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the council would like to have removed from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Painter. If everyone, go ahead and vote. Okay. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce. Madam Clerk, we'll move right along to our public hearing. And just to make it clear, we have actually already had a public hearing on the Bicycle Master Plan. Due to a snafu, we are now having a second public hearing, so we would ask if you wanted to talk about the public to us. Your remarks have to be relevant to the Bicycle Master Plan, and we would ask that you be -- don't repeat necessarily the things that are already on the record. And at this point, I believe we start with a brief presentation by Mr. Karch.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We will be talking tonight about amendment to the Bicycle Master Plan along Washington Street from Lee all the way to St. Joe and State Farm Plaza. So, Scott will be pulling up the presentation here for us to be able to look at this. So, what we're talking about is really a transportation addition in this community. We've talked about it before. We presented to you kind of the process we were going to be going through. Tonight, we're asking for you to take action. We're recommending that you approve the amendment to this thorough process we've gone through, and I'd like to take tonight to kind of address some of the concerns. Let's be realistic. Let's talk about some of the issues that folks have so we can try to see what the benefits, what the pros and cons are of moving forward in this direction. So, when we talk about this, if you look up on the screen, one of the biggest benefits of this is we look at this overall corridor from a multimodal transportation point, and that's really one of the key facets. Things that I'll hear from folks is, there's the Constitution Trail; that's a place for bikes to be. Now, that is a wonderful amenity. You know, we have -- this community is very, very thankful to have that; it is well-used, but it is a recreational vehicle. We also need to have those transportation ability to get to where you go for businesses, to be able to get to your residence, to be able to get to even the trail. And so that's where this overall comprehensive transportation network is going to be very important, and that's what we're looking to amend today. One of the other things that we're going to be talking about a little bit is parking. We'll get to that in just a little bit, but we'll go through that. I want to do let you know that we received a beefy amount of public feedback on this. We printed it off, and there is two inches thick worth of documentation that we have from this. And so that was a wonderful, both comment cards and written emails and the like. So it really has been a very -- the reason I say that, it's important to know, we've gotten a lot of public feedback on this. All of that is included up to June twenty-sixth in the documentation. I thought it was categorized very well; you can look at how that's done. We've had two different public meetings, one at Washington Elementary and the other at our very own Museum of History. Both attended, both had the opportunity to receive public comments. And so just a summary of those public comments. What was really interesting to highlight is that people who do not live along Washington, the vast majority of those individuals, both that live more than one block aware or those that didn't even provide an address, they were very supportive of the plan. We did receive, though, out of the majority of people who live on Washington Street, the vast majority of the responses that we received were not supportive of the plan. So it's important to know the dichotomy of what we are, what responses we received. A couple of the other issues that we heard, even from the Planning Commission, how are we going to deal with a couple intersections? So I just wanted to highlight to you, from a staff perspective, we would not be recommending this if we did not feel comfortable that this corridor could accommodate bicycles on it. So, we looked extensively at Washington and Towanda State. That's a difficult intersection. On the southeast corner, you have Washington Elementary, where we did have a public meeting. But then, what you have is, it's a higher-volume road that's difficult from an overall conveyance; how do you get cars through that? What we've looked at is, on the west leg, that really is going to be the critical piece. We're going to have to remove that barrier median. There's a barrier median along that west leg; that's going to have to be removed. And then there's ample room for some of the different bike accommodations, for even a dedicated bike lane. And so, even on the east leg, the east leg gets a little bit more difficult because that's where the school, you always know there's that, where the lanes came together in the past, and then we changed that to where you then have the merging of lanes. But it still can be challenging. We're going to be working with Washington Elementary, how can we accommodate their bikes? Either way, it can be done either through a dedicated bike lane for a short amount of time or sharrows. It's important to know that it can be done. The next intersection that we looked at was Washington and Mercer. That intersection itself, that we got a lot of comments from the public on that intersection. And what we were able to find out is, it can be accommodated one of two ways. One, we have dedicated bike lanes along Washington from this plan, but we do feel comfortable one of two things could be done. There are NACTO standards, that is, an accepted standard for bike accommodations, that would allow us to either have a sharo, shared bike traffic lane for the right-turn lane east of Warner for eastbound traffic, or we could also possibly have a dedicated, like the, a little bit, a shared right-turn lane and more of a better markings to indicate that bikes are allowed there. So, because of the biking accommodations, we do feel comfortable that it could be managed. With the Mercer-Washington intersection, it's hard to see on the screen, but one of the aspects that was a challenge is the offset. There is a five-foot offset traveling as you travel, so that can be a challenge if you're headed eastbound, crossing that intersection, it's an offset. It can be done. We have other intersections that have, do have some offset, but it's good to acknowledge some of those challenges. One of the other facets that we received a lot of comments about were parking. With parking removal, where is the parking removal? We heard from one resident today about over at Roosevelt in Washington. It's important to know, there are no over in that block of Roosevelt between Roosevelt and Lee; there's no parking that's suggested to be removed. But, the issue is, for buses, you're shrinking some of those parking lanes from eight and a half feet at times down to seven feet. And so for buses, that can be a challenge. But what we've looked at and talked about is, for those short-term accommodations for buses, they're going to bleed over into the bike lanes, that it will kind of go over the top, because buses by nature are at least eight foot wide, mirrors are beyond that, nine inches, so that will go over into the bike lane. During those situations, bikers would have to acknowledge that and recognize their ability to either take the lane or wait, or they would have the ability to deal with that situation as they could. That's something we will have to acknowledge going in. There are spots that will have to be removed, but again, the key thing to talk about is, it can be done. We are going to, once we actually get to this, we will then assess it from a more detailed engineering standpoint. All of this is rough data we've tried to come up with, because all we're looking at now, the reason why this has come up, is we're looking to resurface Washington Street from Veterans over to Mercer. And so because of that, we did not want to, you know, to not take that opportunity. When you resurface, that is the time to do pavement markings, because it will be extended. Whenever you do pavement markings, when you resurface, they last typically the length of the resurfacing. That's tremendous. And then you don't have to, on an annual basis, go back to it. We want to be opportunistic in the way that we approach this, and that's why we're bringing this to you now. So with that being said, there are some different aspects we could go through. I'll cut the time off a little short and then just be open to your feedback.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Karch, comments, before we go to public comment. Alderwoman Burgess.
Just one quick question, and you alluded to this and mentioned it, but I want to make it clear that all the proposals in this document that has been presented for our consideration are consistent with state and federal regulations and also are based on best practices or industry recommendations from organizations like the National Association of City Transportation officials. Is that correct?
You're correct. I alluded to that. Here's the caveat: these are all based upon the best information from a rough looking at it. This is not down to a detailed level, but we feel comfortable saying we think we can meet these. That's the caveat.
So, that leads to a follow-up question. So obviously, there'll still be allowance of time to have discussions about some of these intersections that aren't being dealt with this particular year to make sure that we get the best result possible.
As we make resurfacing and as we expand, there's still going to be a public input process. What this is, is this is to expand the potential for ways and areas for us to look at. All we're going to be doing now is looking at, going ahead and as part of the resurfacing, looking at biking accommodations through that.
Alderman Black.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, for all the work you've been doing, and it's known Amelia's been involved pretty heavily throughout. I just wanted to add a comment on top of everything else. I know that you and I have spoken, I've spoken to other folks on West Washington, who are very supportive of having the bike lane not end at Lee but end at Allen, which would allow us to pick up the bike co-op. And I know staff hasn't vetted that proposal, and I think this is going to be kind of a work in progress over time, so I hope in the next amendment, as we move forward, that that gets vetted and included, because I think that that would be very popular, but we have to take a look at parking and some logistics as well for that. But, yeah, I'm excited to hear the public feedback.
We could even take action on that tonight. The issue is, just from a standpoint of notification, there, we did direct mailers to property owners all along this corridor. We received comments from as much as we could. So, and I even rode my bike into work on Friday, and whenever I got the email from Alderman Black, I rode that, you know, rode it myself in the afternoon, and it, I think it can be accommodated. I'll just say that. I think it can be, but we have not done a public vetting of that to this point.
We should follow the process for that, too, but I hope that as we move forward, that we include that piece in the future.
Okay. Alderman, Matthew.
Jim, I mentioned this in an email earlier, but I've been receiving a lot of messages from businesses that are located in the downtown corridor along Washington Street who are concerned about the lack, loss of those parking spaces. And I just wanted to bring it up and ask the question of, is there a way for us somehow, like maybe at Gridley Street or something, to kick the bike route over onto Front Street since we already created bike lanes on the Front Street, and Front Street also intersects with the Constitution Trail a lot closer in? I don't know if that's been talked about or looked at, but it's something that, like I said, I've been getting kind of mail-bombed by businesses that, even though we had the public meetings, they said that they were unaware that it involved the loss of the bike, of the parking spaces, I'm sorry, and that's really where, all of a sudden, they're all concerned, and I'm getting messages all at one time.
Well, let's be clear. This is a great point you're bringing up, Alderman Matthew. With this existing bike plan, as a council, you have already approved an existing bike master plan. There are bike routes already intended to go on Grove, not bike accommodations is the right way to say that. Bike accommodations on Grove, Front, that they're already there, and as improvements are made, they will be there. So Washington is an additional amendment. It doesn't transition it or move it; it just adds to it to more direct. So that is, if the council voted the Washington Street amendment down, there already is accommodation on Grove and Front, if that does answer your question.
Yeah. I mean, I think, for the most part, you know, I've heard a significant amount of support from St. Joe's all the way into, towards the downtown. It's just there seems to be a lot of confusion in the downtown right now regarding this part of it, that, you know, a lot of folks were unaware that the parking spaces happen. I mean, I'm supportive of biking and bike lanes as a general rule of thumb, but, you know, I just didn't know what else you guys had looked at, if there's other solutions at all.
Whenever you talk about bike accommodations, we have to be realistic that there are times, and there's going to be some hard choices. One of the most difficult aspects of any bike plan is parking. Whenever we did the original plan, we did everything we could to try to minimize impact of parking, because when you talk about parking, people get, it impacts them. If you can't park right in front of a business, even if it's around the corner, they're just, it's just very difficult. So, there is parking that doesn't affect parking on side streets, parking decks and the like, but still, any loss of parking is normally not perceived positively, but there's still ample parking; it's just where do you walk from and to?
Okay. Thank you.
Alderwoman Schmidt.
And like Jamie, I've received some comments from business owners about Washington Street in the downtown area. I've been very encouraged by the tone of those, which is, "How can we solve this?" Not, "We shouldn't do this." And in particular, I think Rory O'Connor at the Castle has come up with a number of different potential scenarios that would, that would require some collaboration. different potential scenarios that would require some collaboration with the city to help think about parking in different ways, and, you know, possibly using some city-owned lots and that kind of thing. Can you just comment in general, if, you know, assuming that we adopt this, what the city buy-in is, other than, you know, what we're talking about with resurfacing and painting? How, are there opportunities, I guess I'm asking you, for further conversations about different kinds of parking?
There's always opportunities for additional conversations about parking, and there's so many different ways that you can do it. If we talk specifically about the Castle, you can see on the right side, between east, you can see where the cursor, I'm trying to wave it around a little bit, in front of that business, there is no change, no taking away from parking. There is across the street, in front of PNC, there's ample parking, a lot of times isn't fully utilized, so there is conversations, maybe that could happen with another business. But the issue that the Castle business owner would have is, once again, it's back down to that shrinking, that shrinking the parking lane. And so whenever you talk about those big buses that are coming in for their business, their stakeholders, that's the concern. Once again, I think the answer to that is, when there is overhang, whenever it expands into the bike lanes, that still can be accommodated. That's perfectly acceptable from a short-term perspective. But again, that's, I think, more of that concern of how do they accommodate, making sure they can deal with their buses?
So what, maybe you could talk a little bit more about what the process is going forward. So as we begin to move west into this section of Washington, and maybe there's more of a space crunch, so to speak, for parking, how does this conversation evolve? Like, how do these property owners get involved in helping find solutions with the city?
It's a very good question, because it's important to highlight, this isn't happening in this area next year. Unless council directs staff differently, I still take the tact of opportunistic in nature. I really do not find it beneficial, from a cost perspective, to go in and grind and do other, sometimes, some communities do. We try to say, when it's resurfaced, time to resurface. That's whenever you look at changing markings, because it's more effective that way. If we wait and we keep that same model that staff's recommending, this won't happen for, you know, eight to 10 years. You know, we just did some micro-resurfacing on that a couple of years ago. It could be in the eight-year kind of timeframe. When that happens, assuming the council keeps the same model, assuming we do what we're doing, we would reach out, you know, whenever we do that kind of, whenever we do that kind of work, we'd reach out to the adjacent property owners, make sure that we do that engineering that we talked about. Standards might have changed in eight years, and so we look at what's available to us at that time. All we're telling you is that, using today's standards, we feel comfortable that this corridor could be, have bike accommodations. Does that make sense?
Alderman, Matthew.
Sorry, I just wanted to add, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I also received supportive emails from businesses as well. It was just, you know, I wanted to bring up the concerns that some businesses had. We got, I think that the entire council got supportive and concerned emails from businesses, you know, just as the same as we did from residents. We got supportive and concerned emails at the same time, so just wanted to add that in there, that it wasn't all negative.
They've done all this, and surprised me.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to go ahead and call, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I, I just had two follow-up questions, and one to what Karen had asked about how we can engage this conversation. It seems to me that perhaps the Transportation Commission, once it's up and running, this would be an excellent project for them to look at, some of these questions that we have about how to best implement as time moves on. Also, you talked about widening. My understanding is, the area in front of the Castle is actually an area where the street is wide enough, where if this plan were implemented as currently drafted, the parking spaces for the buses and that loading and loading zone would actually be widened to better accommodate them. Maybe, and you don't need to look now, but that was just my understanding, so perhaps as we move through this, we can clarify that, because that was my understanding, that we could actually make some improvements there, to make it safer for those buses to be parked along the street. Also, when we're talking about the width of a street, there are also clear benefits to narrowing traffic lanes, and that there is a positive correlation between lane width and speed, and one of the primary concerns we have in this area with regard to public safety is the speed at which many vehicles drive.
Two answers. First of all, you are correct. In that area from east to McLean, it's going from eight to eight and a half. I'm thinking of a different area, there's too many different areas along here with changes in cross-section. But in this case, it goes from eight to eight and a half, and so this wasn't one of the areas that we had talked about. The other facet is, when you do narrow down lanes, we talked about this at the Planning Commission, people travel what they feel comfortable with. You can set the speed limit at whatever, there's no offense intended, but you, as elected officials, can set it whatever you feel like you want to set it at. People will typically drive what they feel comfortable with. And by narrowing lanes, by making parking, by allowing parking, by shrinking down that drivable width, you slow down traffic. That is correct.
Alderman Sage.
Thank you. Just a quick question. I know you had one of the meetings at Washington School, and I know for me, one of my concerns is the area. Do we have a statement? Is District 87 okay with this proposal, you know, there by the school? I mean, maybe that's been presented, and I don't know, I'm just curious as to what...
We have not received support nor anything against from District 87. We've received feedback from community organizations like, and it's all in the packet, but like YMCA, Connect Transit, there are other organizations that also submitted support for this. Our fire chief also weighed in on it, but again, so we did not hear, I didn't receive anything in writing from District 87.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Alderman.
Alderman Sage, when I was speaking with the principal at Washington School during the public session, he was in favor of it. That's what he verbally told me.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. At this point, we do have, we're going to open the public hearing, you have up to three minutes. And again, since we've already had a public hearing, the Planning Commission had a public hearing, we do ask and encourage people not to provide repetitive testimony or comments. And so if you're interested in participating, if you please step forward, and then we'll have you come one at a time.
There's no pad up here for anybody to sign?
Should be.
Did your job, it disappeared.
Okay.
Can I help?
No. Okay. Everyone has up to three minutes.
Well, as just said, public safety is important to our city, and it's a top priority. You're narrowing the lanes on Washington Street with this amendment and with the plan. I'd like for you to think about an emergency vehicle leaving Fire Station 1, turning left on Lee Street, with this narrowing down of lanes is slowing the traffic. So what's this going to do to the Five Bugles report? Are we going to lose somebody's life because of this? There's three pages, by the way. By painting any bicycle vehicle lane on arterial streets, such as being attempted to rezone Washington Street only, gives the driver of a two-wheeled vehicle no better safety than without them. It gives them a comfort index rating. Are we rezoning this vehicle roadway as a vehicle roadway or as a recreational lane? What about the comfortability index of car, motorcycle, moped, scooters, trucks with trailers, SUVs, pickup trucks, and the very homeowners that have come up against this? What about the EMT, the police and fire that have to go down a narrower road? What will happen is the intersection of Washington and Towanda, as they go through that and are slowed down, as they're racing to an accident at Mercer and Washington, whose life will be lost? I think that's a very important priority. I've heard that from this council, and I respect that. I respect bicycles on the road, but painting lanes is not any safer. Fatalities, according to the Fatality Analyst Reporting System data, 44% of the deaths that occur, occur on arterial roads. Most of them occur at intersections, as Towanda and Washington is. Towanda, Washington is unique because of geometry there, there's a lot of angles there. Cycle lanes are not really infrastructure at all, they're just paint. The road is decorated by particularly narrow, online painted cycle lanes, and does not have the physical infrastructure to protect cyclists from the danger of motor vehicles that have it painted. That's why the painting is the first step. The second step would be dedicated lanes. The Netherlands, which is a lot of bicycles we will sight, has abandoned painted lanes completely. They're moving toward dedicated lanes only. So how are we going to pay for this in eight and 10 years, with a structural deficit that we still have? So we're making a plan, we don't know where the money is coming from. I think I have a high regard for the staff we have, and I think they'll hopefully move to some micro-simulations of our traffic systems before they come before this council, so you can see what really is going to happen. Thank you.
All right. Again, if you'll sign in and state your name for the record, please. Thank you.
Do you want me to sign in here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oops.
Oh, yeah. That's a good idea.
Neil Gridley.
Hey, Neil, would you pass the sign-in sheet back? So that way, people don't have to sign up while they're, yeah, so we can handle this expedition. Thank you, Neil.
Okay. Neil Gridley, 1219 East Washington Street. I live four doors east of Washington Grade School. Obviously, the bike lane's going to go in front of my house. I'm in favor of it. I've seen many iterations created by the city. The first iteration, I didn't care much for. The second iteration, I liked better. This, I liked even better than what I'd seen before. I've been to several meetings on this. There's been people speaking in favor of the safety, people speaking against the safety. I think it's difficult to say whether or not it's more safe or less safe. Maybe it has to do with how you use the bike lane, or you might use the bike lane. So that's all I have to add.
Thank you, Neil.
Hi, I'm Donna Boland. I'm going to address the process, not so much the bike lanes. I'm in favor of the plan as is. According to the plan, there was an advisory commission that was supposed to be formed, which would have been, would have had meeting dates, agendas, public comment, according to the ONA, and no commission was set up. And I think that some of the questions and concerns could have been resolved by going through that commission. Instead, we had a group of interested bicyclists, which were amateur consultants for a major infrastructure project that will have long-term effects on the community at large. I'm not sure the Alderman met with the residents to discuss the change, as was done on Clinton and Monroe, and currently, or in the near future, we're going to have professional traffic engineer and a traffic commission. This is an example that needs to go to that commission, like Alderman Burgess said. The resolution that's in the council packet is dated as adopted today, which is prior to the public hearing, and it was online Thursday. I don't like that at all. The resolution for the Planning Commission was in their packet as adopted with today's date in June. What's down in the minutes of the Planning Commission is that there were two vote, three options. One was to vote in favor, one against, and the other one was to table it, because there needed more study. There needs to be more study. Everybody has said that here. So I feel that the proposal should be tabled, it should be directed maybe to the traffic commission and the traffic engineer. Mr. Karch can still, you know, do the work this year on Washington Street, but I think that there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed, and I would like to do it right the first time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Trevor McGuire. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposal, and I really just have two brief comments. I bike Washington all the time. If you want to get over to the east to go to all those businesses, you have to. I'm a bike commuter, I don't drive, so that's my only option. There's a lot of safety concerns about the cyclists themselves, but when I'm riding, there are three types of people who are driving around me. Those are the people who drive really, really close to me, those who drive really far from me, and those in the Goldilocks zone. The three feet, completely legal, everything is great. We need everybody to be that person, all right? Because when somebody sees me and swerves way around, gives me eight feet of berth, that's great for me, not so great for the person driving the other direction, right? This is erratic behavior, all right? We need cyclists and drivers to be on the same page. You put the little bit of paint on the ground, people get used to it, that's what's going to happen, all right? So that's why I'm in favor, not just for my safety, but for also because of how many times I've seen the person coming at me have to swerve. Now, you see this sort of stuff all the time. And speaking of swerving, I just want to mention real quick that I do have a driver's license, and it does say, when an emergency vehicle is coming up behind me, I get out of the road. Now, I do the same thing if I'm on a bike. If the road is narrow and there's an emergency vehicle coming up, it's not like the Tour de France is going on, and there's not going to be any place for anybody to go, all right? We're going to pull over and let the vehicle go by. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Teller. I live at 807 Broadway in Normal. Given my address, one might discount my opinion is not relevant in this matter, but there are a couple of reasons that I disagree, and I'd hope you consider my thoughts. First, as council members and stewards of this community, I'm certain that your planning for the future of our community considers retaining some of the students of our local colleges and universities to stay on here, get jobs, buy homes, raise families. I'm one of those people. I came here at ISU nearly 40 years ago and never left. Although I live in Normal, I'm proud to say that I've worked my entire 34 career in the city of Bloomington at Country Financial. You should also know that I'm a year-round bicycle commuter and have firsthand experience in riding in traffic in the city of Bloomington. The matter that you're considering tonight of amending the bike plan by adding a road diet to Washington Street is not something new to the city of Bloomington, and precedent exists with prior councils taking similar actions. I refer to the road diet on Jersey Avenue. Prior to that action, the wide-open one lane and steep hill along Jersey resulted in vehicles traveling at a rate of speed well above the limit. The road diet that was implemented there has significantly reduced speeds and increased the safety of all road users along Jersey. I'd add that the bike lanes end prior to the intersection there, and in those situations, I've had no trouble merging with traffic and negotiating those intersections. The other reason I came here tonight is that of my role as the president of the Friends of the Constitution Trail. The Friends have been around longer than the trail itself, and our history is rich with citizens working with their local government to improve the community. Our funding primarily comes from small donations from individuals throughout the community who love and support the trail. Alderman Matthew, the Friends have funded bike route signs between the Illinois Central and interurban branches along Croxton, Buchanan, Clayton, and Lincoln in your ward. Alderman Sage, the Friends have contributed. Friends assist your constituents in the Oakwood subdivision with building a sidewalk access to the trail. In addition, the Cummings Fox Creek Road Bridge project over the Union Pacific Railroad will provide safe trail access for many in the southwest part of our city. Alderman Malabey, Friends are working on closing a gap along Drive and Norma Drive to improve trail access to your constituents. Alderman Burgess, the Friends have provided bicycle racks in downtown Bloomington, and our wayfinding project made certain that we were directing trail users to destinations such as David David Mansion, Route 66 Museum, and along the downtown, and other areas in the downtown business area. Alderman Painter, the largest community trail cleanup occurs in your district. Alderman Schmidt, Friends of our, we supplied a water fountain in your area. Alderman Black, we're going to help with the master plan that's going to go in for O'Neill Park. Alderman Hallman, the Bloomington-Manfield line will end up in your ward, we're helping. Alderman Bray, I've heard concerns about constituents from your ward that have trouble crossing the trail at Airport and GE. We're working to help that.
I'm sorry, your time's up, sir. Thank you. I wanted to make sure you got to all nine.
I got all of you. The last thing, the last point I'd like to make is, the Friends of the Constitution paid for 50% of this bike plan.
Thank you very much.
Your partner, and we encourage you to support.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
crossing the trail at Airport and GE. We're working to help that situation.
I'm sorry, your time's up, sir. Thank you. I wanted to make sure you got to all nine.
I got all of you. The last point I'd like to make is the Friends of the Constitution paid for 50% of this bike plan.
Thank you very much.
Your partner, and we encourage you to support.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amanda Hogenson, and I live on White Place. And I previously worked at Eastland Medical Plaza II, which is on the corner of Washington and Veterans Parkway. And in the summertime, I have two children, and so in the summertime, I'd have a babysitter that would come to my house, which would mean that I didn't have to drive my children anywhere, so I could bike to work. And this was about, I would say, probably four years ago, that I would like to try and bike to work. And I wasn't able to do so because I didn't feel very safe doing so. At that time, Washington Street was not resurfaced as nicely as it is now. So to drive through the potholes on your bicycle, it was a little nerve-wracking. And then riding on the sidewalk in the mornings, it was more of a threat because there were numerous walkers out there for their morning exercise. And numerous of the walkers would be wearing headphones or walking a dog or both. So they would not hear my bell ringing when I would come up behind them or me announcing myself because they had their headphones on. So I... Then the sidewalks themselves, being in an older neighborhood, which I live in one as well, were very uneven and cracked, and so it wasn't very safe. I gave up on biking to work after about a week, unfortunately. And if the proposed bike lanes on Washington were there, I would have felt very comfortable riding to work every day that I would work part-time, and I would thoroughly enjoy it. And then also, I have a soon-to-be 16-year-old son who is not going to be getting his driver's license, and he will be biking to and from a job. And if he has the Washington lane that's open for him, then he can open up his job search into the east side and not just in our small neighborhood where there's really nothing there for him. So I am in favor of the bike lanes, and thank you.
Hi. Waiting for my time. My name is Stacy Tutte. I'm a professor at the U of I College of Law. And what I'm here today to do is speak on behalf of the West Bloomington Housing Collaborative, and also now as a new resident of Bloomington, and speaking in support of the bike lane. And the reason why the West Bloomington Housing Collaborative is in support of this bike lane is for a number of reasons. One, you have your own research. For once, I'm not going to rattle off statistics to you or surveys or any of that because you already have all that information in front of you, of how there's a need for low-cost transportation to connect our communities. So you have that need that's there, and also a great plan established in order to make that connection. In particular, our funded partners are in support of this proposal because our three funded agencies are all on Washington. We have the Habitat for Humanity Restore, we have the Central Community Action, and then, of course, WB RP. And yes, Alderman Black, we like and encourage the amendment eventually to connect it all the way through Allen because it would connect it to the Bike Co-op, which is now providing a low-cost opportunity where people can volunteer in order to buy their own bikes and then utilize this trail that we're talking about. But what I do want to talk about and kind of end on here is why I think a bike lane that connects the east and west side is so important, and that's about community. And I'm telling you from my own personal experience, my daughter is into biking. I'm more of a runner, but I'm trying this. And I know I want to model good behavior, so I'm cycling myself now in order to be able to do so. And recently went on a women's ride from Bloomington Cycle, and we went through the west side. And as we were doing our ride, regrettably, one of our riders actually fell and injured herself seriously as she was trying to cross on Front Street over the railroad tracks. Now, that was the negative event that happened. But what came later is what I think is most important, because what happened were all those women that were with me saw the west side that I see on a daily basis. We had teenagers who often paid attention to no one, don't really care about what's happening around them, stop and ask if we were okay. We had residents from their porches shouting out, asking if we needed to call for help or if they could come out and be assistance. We even had one gentleman come over and offer to house all of our bikes, as many as needed to be, in his garage so they'd be safe and protected if we were unable to continue our ride. That is the experience that happens when people get out of their cars, ride their bikes into areas they otherwise wouldn't because they feel confident and able to do so. And I felt confident and able to do so because I was part of this ride, as did the other women. But what also brought that feeling was the reaction from all of the residents around us. Through no prompting, they had no idea who we are or anything that was going on. They just wanted to help. And more people can have that experience if we allow bike lanes to have greater accessibility across our neighborhoods instead of dividing them. Thank you.
Yeah, I've lived in this town my whole life. I ride my bike. It was only recently that I was able to get a car because I'm poor. I like the idea of cheap, affordable transportation, and somehow I feel like that goes nicely together with all the justice stuff that we were talking about earlier this evening. But, yeah, just do it. Just build this thing. Come on, man. Like, for reals? It's just a bike lane?
Thank you. Michael.
Hi, my name is Michael Gorman. I'm co-chair of Public Policy and Infrastructure for Bike Blono. One of the questions I fielded most often as a bicycle advocate since the adoption of the Complete Streets Ordinance is, why do we need a Complete Streets Ordinance and a Bicycle Master Plan? If the city policy is that every street needs to be made safe and comfortable for all users of all ages and abilities using all modes of transportation anytime a street is being resurfaced, why do we need a bike plan to tell us these specific streets need accommodations? The answer is simple. The planning process helps identify solutions to complex projects well in advance, which helps in all sorts of ways, from clarifying the cost of a project earlier in the budget process to identifying where parking will be displaced and where offsets may be needed. It gives nearby business owners and residents time to prepare and provide input and gets the wheels turning inside the engineering department long before implementation. Here's an analogy: the east side highway. The comprehensive plan that you adopted a few years ago will make the east side highway incredibly unlikely, but because of the planning process, landowners along the corridor are more aware of the plans. They know, for instance, it's probably not a great idea to build a house right in the middle of where the highway could run. The planning documents outline a shared understanding for a major project so everyone affected can prepare and advocate for their needs. With Washington Street, one of the most frequently expressed concerns has been loss of parking along the corridor, especially in the downtown area. That feedback is great because it means we've got a few years now, the time between tonight's vote and the next time the street will be resurfaced in the downtown area, to identify ways to accommodate the cars that won't be able to park on the north side of the street anymore after implementation. In the back of your minds, you now know this is coming and can adequately plan for it as opportunities arise. You won't be stuck trying to solve a bunch of problems on a very tight timeline. Another question that I've heard a lot throughout this process is, Washington Street is dangerous. I'd never ride my bike there. Why Washington Street? And the answer is embedded right there in the question. It is precisely because it is dangerous that we need to change it. After implementation, everybody who uses Washington Street will do so more safely. Motorists will drive slower because of skinnier lanes. Pedestrians will be able to cross more safely because people will be driving slower, because in some areas, they won't have to cross as many busy traffic lanes, and because we'll hopefully have more and better-designed crosswalks. Cyclists will be able to count on having some dedicated space on the street so they don't have to worry about motorists whizzing past dangerously close. Concerns about safety are based in large part on what Washington Street is today, not what it could be in the future. So as you cast your votes tonight, I urge you to consider the Complete Streets Ordinance. Given that staff will be required to make Washington Street for cyclists when they resurface it, isn't it better to start planning what that means today rather than when they're getting close to implementation?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike McCurdy. I'm a founding member of Bike Blono, and I serve as the organization's current vice president. I'm also chair of the Connect Transit Board of Trustees. About three weeks ago, I received a Facebook message from a single parent. They have one car, and while mom's at work, the 16-year-old daughter wants to bike from where they live, near Hershey and Clearwater, to Barnes &amp; Noble Bookstore. Mom wanted my advice on the route that her daughter could bike from their home to safely arrive at the bookstore. She could see no safe route, and neither could I. As for a route, all I could do is offer the best of the bad options presented, offer safety suggestions like claiming the lane, wearing a safety vest, and following the rules of the road. And I offered free bike lights so they could be more visible. This is not unusual. All of us in Bike Blono get contacted by people who want to or have to get from point A to point B safely by bike. There are no good answers often, and this is why Bike Blono exists, to try to find and create those answers. We collaborate with municipal staff, elected officials and residents, including those in Founder's Grove, to find answers and to further the bicycle as a viable transportation option in our community. We partnered with the city to help develop the Bicycle Master Plan approved in 2015, and since last year, we've been working with city staff to amend that plan to include Washington Street, a primary east-west thoroughfare throughout our city. And it's also... Washington Street was also a top request in 2015 and today for inclusion in the plan for people who use bikes. If you look at the east side, including where this 16-year-old girl lives, you'll see that the community was designed to be accessible by people and cars, but not for other modes of transportation. In other parts of the city, streets were overbuilt to add more lanes later or to speed traffic through neighborhoods, and today, this presents an opportunity. On Washington Street, we can slow down traffic by narrowing the lanes and welcoming bicyclists to that street. This makes the road safer for all users. Slower speeds give motorists, bicycles, and pedestrians more time to react. It gives more vulnerable road users an opportunity to survive. In a car crash with a bike rider or a pedestrian at 20 miles per hour, there's a 90% chance for survival. At 40 miles per hour, there's a 90% chance the bicyclist or pedestrian will not survive. When bicycle infrastructure is proposed in any community, often the first argument against it is, well, what to do about all those bicyclists breaking the rules of the road? Well, let's break this down. Do we really think the mode of transportation someone uses determines how they may follow the rules of the road? All users of the road need to follow the rules regardless of the mode. As a year-round, daily bike commuter, I see more cars not using signals than do. Very few actually come to complete stop. Cell phone use is rampant. Everyone needs to follow the rules to make the road a more predictable place. While we're talking about amending the bike plan to include Washington Street, it won't help the 16-year-old girl who wants to bike from her east side home to Barnes &amp; Noble, but it will help people on the west side get to that same destination. We hope that you will approve the amendment to the bike plan. Thank you.
Hey there. Stephanie Michaelis, lifelong cyclist and regular bike commuter, current president of the Bike Blono Board. I promise I've been crossing stuff off, as I've heard it, so I won't repeat anything. As you heard Michael Gorman mention, a handful of parking spots are in play. We have time to deal with that. He did mention that as well. Regardless of parking, all data known in other communities shows that there should be a positive economic impact of bringing bike lanes to the downtown area. Additionally, since this is a plan that might not be enacted for years in the downtown area, it's possible that vehicular transportation may look entirely different when the time comes, especially with ride-sharing services and self-driving vehicles becoming more popular, not to mention the possibility of a redeveloped downtown area. It would then be important to focus on other types of transportation, bikability and walkability issues of the downtown area in order to keep the area vibrant and profitable as demographics change. Additionally, the health benefits of riding a bike, whether for commuting or for leisure or sport, are numerous, making it easier and safer for cyclists to use this direct route will encourage healthier options for transportation for those who have the choice in our community. For those who don't have the choice in their means of transportation, we are also concerned about issues of safety, of course, but of equality as well. Cyclists would want to use the Washington Street without interruption for the same reason a vehicle would. It is direct, and it gets you to where you need to go. Diverting lane in the downtown area would be dangerous and ineffective. Cyclists would want to stay on the direct route, and doing so without infrastructure would prove to be a risky endeavor. The road is for everyone to use, and study after study has concluded the safest place for a person to bike is on the road, so I won't repeat that data for you guys this time. In fact, riding on that adjacent sidewalk is more dangerous, and as we've heard before, the safest place is on the road for the cyclist, and that reduces the incidents that happen in intersections that were questioned before. These benefits extend to pedestrians as well, and the sidewalks are safer because the bicycle has been removed from the sidewalk, and then the bicycle infrastructure is shown to slow car speeds on improved streets. The plan is a work in progress, and it's important that we make positive changes as we see the need and put the plan into action as the opportunity presents itself, especially since the changes might not be enacted for several years in this case, when we're talking about the downtown area. With the number of cyclists increasing in our community already, ignoring the issue is not an option, and being proactive and having a plan is critical. The Bike Blono Board and the organization's members urge you to adopt this change to the plan to have an overwhelmingly positive impact on our community with regard to safety, economics, and health. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John, last but not least.
All right. Well, sorry to... I wasn't going to talk here, but I live at 111 Rust Road, which is located next to Washington Street. So having a bicycle path to go all the way across town on Washington would be just great, except I also live near St. Joseph Hospital here. The ambulance is there all the time. I understand the city wants to take out that concrete curb in the middle, which is right where the high school empties out into the grade school. I believe Tuane empties out from that right. Isn't that one of the reasons why we have that concrete implosion? Because sometimes young drivers might not necessarily be quite as good at making that turn as older, experienced drivers. Inside the bicycle plan, I understand before it said that this was a D-level or a C-level route, which was for adult, experienced bicyclists. When I was driving, I would take Front Street instead because it's shaded and it is less traffic. As I understand, inside of our current plan, Front Street is one of those streets that we have listed inside there. So if you want to go with Washington, that's fine, but I would work more on Front and Grove inside there because they seem to be a lot more open for younger drivers to do that. Then you can start talking about how you're taking away parking space from businesses and the like, because when I was in New England, bicycle paths were a big problem. See, there was no places to park when I was at Harvard and other places around there because either there was somebody unloading a big truck, temporarily filling up the bicycle lane, or cars parked in those places, sometimes illegally, and I'm not sure how you're going to do this. So good luck with your deliberations, but please be careful on the safety because that road is the major bypass, and if there is ever an emergency, it's an incumbent at a particular time, and both of our emergency hospitals are likely to be filled with that. And we do have, down on the end of Washington, the Interstate Center, the Galaxy Theater, and the Coliseum, and other things like that. So if you're okay with the safety of that, that's fine, but I'm just thinking that there should be a concern of, as someone said here, going 40 miles an hour? And 20 miles an hour is a lot more dangerous for a bicycle? It's also a lot faster for an ambulance, and those two things going at different speeds is sort of a concern. So good luck with your deliberations, and I am out of here because I am unfortunately the last speaker. Good luck, and thank you for saying so long.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and declare the public hearing to be completed, and we move right on to our regular agenda. Item 9A, shock of all shocks, involves a consideration of the resolution to amend the 2015 City of Bloomington Bicycle Master Plan by including Washington Street from Lee Street to St. Joseph Drive as infrastructure identified within the plan. We have 10 minutes budgeted for this, but is there a... Let's start out with a motion. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Hallman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Burgess. Discussion.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I mentioned a couple of weeks ago that I think one of the strengths of our system is the ward system, right? And I will tell you, I have some concerns about the safety around Washington Grade School primarily, but yet I'm willing to trust and defer to the alderman because you know that area better than I do. And so, I'll be supporting this in a minute, but again, I can't help but have some concerns just about Washington Grade School is all. Thanks.
Alderman Burgess.
And I appreciate that, and that's why I'm glad that that particular portion is not being implemented immediately, because I would like to have more conversation, not just about the bike accommodations, but about the pedestrian accommodation, because in that particular area, pedestrian safety is the highest priority. I think vehicle and cyclist safety also is a priority, and a large priority, but we need to specifically focus on there and maybe look for innovative and different... need to specifically focus on there and maybe look for innovative and different ways to improve the safety in that area. So I appreciate those comments. I'm glad we have time to continue that discussion. I also will try to be brief, because it's getting late, but this is something that has been worked on for an extensive period of time. It would be impossible for me to encapsulate or summarize all of the comments I have received and the feedback I have gotten, because this has generated a lot of public commentary, a lot of engagement, a lot of very encouraging debate as we move forward. The one thing I can say, though, is that I have learned and been exposed to experiences that are outside of my own, and that is this idea that there are a significant portion of people in our community who use bicycles as their primary means of transportation for a wide variety of reasons. And in talking to people, it's become clear to me that when it comes to transportation, regardless of whether you bike, you drive, you take the bus or you walk, everyone wants the same things. They want affordable, accessible and safe modes of transportation. They also want a direct route as possible, because when we're talking about transportation and not recreation, people are trying to get somewhere there as quickly and as efficiently as possible. And that's why we're talking about this particular corridor and not diverting to side streets from time to time, because that is not the most direct route. And that is also why during the initial planning process for the Bike Master Plan, this was the second most requested route, and so I'm glad we've had a chance to revisit it and look at that. And we've heard that there are many, many benefits to moving in this direction to provide safer transportation for everyone. We've also heard that there will be trade-offs, but I'd also like us to keep in mind that we've already made trade-offs by adopting a vehicle-centric manner of planning. And there have been negative impacts in terms of public safety and in terms of quality of life along this corridor because we have prioritized the speed and mode of transportation for vehicles. So I'm excited about this possibility to begin balancing that and to protect everyone and to look out for all these variety of interests we have when it comes to transportation. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Just wanted, one observation, this has been, spent a lot of time on bike, but when I was at the US Conference of Mayors, they were talking, continuing Complete Streets 2.0, 3.0, and we're not alone. They're handling the same things. And actually, in Miami Beach, was, we were riding back and forth. I couldn't believe how, I would have been nervous driving and all this, and the cab driver said, eh, you get used to it. And you just, you have to drive slower. And I think it, you know, reconfirmed sort of anecdotally some of what we've seen. But at this point, seeing other comments, let's go ahead and vote on this. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no naes to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay, and then we move on to our next item, actually 9B, Gross Motor Motors Arena Fiscal Year Annual Report by Lynn Cannon, and then some council discussion. Lynn, it's-
I have relief for me that everybody's heading out, let me tell you.
It's just that riveting Coliseum, oh, excuse me, arena.
Go on home, it's late.
Go to the restaurant, Debbie.
Don't make me more nervous.
Give me a line.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for the opportunity to recapsulate for you the 2016-17 fiscal year at the Bloomington Coliseum. Move on. One of the things I really wanted to highlight is the fact that we are very involved in the community, and as a new member of the community, I found it very exciting, the number of events and the number of things that we're able to participate in as a large building in your community. You know, where I came from, my children can only invite four family members to their graduation. Here, all of the high schools can invite everybody, and I got to see that this spring as all of these family members were able to attend, grandparents, young children, babies, aunts, uncles, thousands of people for each of these graduations, and it was wonderful to see. A lot of fundraisers we held in fiscal year 17, and will continue to do so coming up as the years go by. The monthly indoor farmer's market, always a great event, and something that you can see every, once a month on Saturdays during the winter months at the Coliseum. So we do a lot of fun entertaining events for the community, and over 100 days of ice rentals that we were able to accommodate that were overflowed from the Pepsi Center because they just could not accommodate all of the teams and all of the lessons that they wanted to have over there. So we do a lot of community involvement. Second thing we're going to talk about is the financial performance. We were not on target this year. We knew that it was going to be a challenge when we came into the arena to begin with, but we feel that there were really two big factors that we would point to as a reason for that deficit. The big one, of course, is the unrenewed naming sponsorship. Normally, you have a series of months prior to the expiration of a contract of the naming rights that gives you the opportunity to seek a new sponsor if the current sponsor isn't going to renew. When VenueWorks took over the Coliseum business in April of 2016, that contract was just expired. So we were behind the eight ball to begin with, and it was a long process, and it, you know, took a lot of time to be able to find the right business partner for that, but it is nice that it is now in the past for us, and we're looking forward. The other thing that we felt was a big contributor to that deficit was some of the suite holders that we had previously had contracts with were a trade agreement of some sort, some nature of a trade agreement. And in looking forward to the business that we were doing and what we could use as a trade value, we were very careful to make sure that we were getting the exact equal compensation in trade that we would have had in cash. So there were some suite holders that didn't feel that they could participate in their suite contracts any longer, and those two factors alone accounted for over $300,000 of that deficit for the year. So I think those two are two important things to-
Can I, doesn't that suggest, am I missing something, that that was a bad decision?
A bad decision?
That you, to change the trade agreements if we lost money?
I think that the decision was based on the fact that we had to have the value equal what was, equal to the cash value. So we were going to keep the suite values the same, no matter whether you were providing a trade of a service or a commodity, or paying cash in full. So in order for us to be equitable to all of the suite holders, we made sure that that was, A, an equitable service or trade that we were going to receive, and B, that it was something of value that we could use at the Coliseum. We didn't want to just make the trade because it made the business able to afford their suite.
But that lost us money.
I think that it cleaned up some of the problematic contracts that were maybe not providing the services that were of value to the Coliseum.
Maybe in the short term, because in the long term, hopefully we get all the suites rented at the same value.
Gotcha, okay.
So it's just going to take a while to rent out.
Right, and I think we're in that process now. So we have really great business partners that are suite holders. We have renewal contracts as we're speaking going on, and businesses that we are looking forward to, reaching out to now, that we have the naming rights, and we know where we're headed, and we have that piece behind us. And that's not just for the suites, but also for some other sponsorships, signage and things like that, that were sort of on hold as we were reaching that point of critical decision-making on that naming sponsorship, because there is an exclusivity part of that contract that we had to make sure that we did not close ourselves off to some of those revenue streams that we may have had.
Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome. So that is where we stood. I think some of our expenses we were able to bring in under budget as we were moving out throughout the year, keeping an eye on those expenses very carefully because we did not want to increase any of that deficit. I think one of the best parts of what we do here is how we can provide an economic impact to our entire community, and some of the events that we have, many of the events that we have, bring in people from all over the Midwest, not just the state of Illinois. There are so many events that we do that are, help to fill the hotel rooms. We hear anecdotal evidence and have trouble getting reservations in restaurants during some of the weekends, that we have some of our bigger events in the Coliseum. And we had over 159,000 guests that reached here, came to our venue last year. So I think as you look at the economic impact of the Coliseum on the community, just last year alone was over $11 million, and in the total of the 11 years that the building has been in place, it's been over $150 million in economic value. Capital expenditures and improvements, we did safety and security improvements. We had some issues. There were expanded metal gates that were covering the entrance doors. It was a fire code violation, and we took those out immediately. All doors can be now safely opened from the inside. We worked with the stagehand union. They have an improved fall arrest system, so when they are working at height, they will have much safer equipment harnesses that can keep them from falling to the cement floor or the ice while they are working. Some of the capital expenditures were new concession carts. A brand-new point-of-sale system was purchased and installed, and with improved training, it helps to provide better, more accurate accounting and better speed of service. Still working on the speed of service. We're all in it together, so we know we have some ways to go there, but we are working on. I think it's difficult in some events because you have those natural breaks in the action. Everyone goes to the concession stands at the same time because action on the ice or in the arena has stopped, but we are doing our best.
If that's predictable, I mean, that's what I hear more than anything else.
I know.
And I do want to say, first of all, I know you had transition issues, Lynn, and dealing with you and VenueWorks is certainly marked improvement in terms of openness and transparency, but that is the one thing I hear more than anything else from people who usually don't complain. And the question is, if I'm going to pay way too much beer, why isn't somebody in line there to take my cash?
There should be, and we are working on making sure that that happens. We're very conscious of that fact, and I think what we want to do is to see how, now that we've got the new point-of-sale system, you know, anytime you have a new system where people are learning to use a cash register for the first time, it's a little bit of a slower learning process. That's behind us. We've got the system in place. All of our staff is trained on using it. I think it's going to be faster each single, every single time we use it. In fact, even though we had 7,500 people at the concert for the Chris Stapleton concert in April, we still managed to service enough people to increase our sales to the highest level ever, where we had over $125,000 in gross revenue for food and beverage alone at that concert. So we're moving in the right direction. We're finding new places that we can put carts and be able to provide service at different events, depending on where the traffic flow is going to be. So it's getting there. The concourses are a little narrow, but can't change the building, so we're going to change the way we serve. And then, again, we had some new menu boards. We're looking at new menus. We're using local suppliers whenever possible, and I think even this year, our chefs are reaching out to more and more local suppliers. So those are the types of things that we're looking at for improvements. And then finally, looking at goals coming up ahead, I think that our highest priority is to obviously make sure that our ADA guests are comfortable and have access to move about the building in comfort. So in the capital expenditure plan, we do have those improvements that are required. We are looking to refurbish and possibly replace the dashboard systems, which are in some pretty shabby shape. The hockey team has brought to our attention some areas that are very deficient, and we're looking to do that. We're looking, again, at looking at some underutilized areas of the arena to be able to utilize it more efficiently and also more often. So our chefs and our catering staff are putting together expanded banquet menus, and they're looking at ways to increase the number of events that we have, business meetings, luncheons, things during the day when we don't necessarily have an event, or in the summer when we're much lighter in events. We're looking for ways to fill the building more often, and that's where we are.
Questions. Alderman Black.
Thank you. I was going to hop in there when you were talking about the-
All right.
Oh, you're fine. Thank you for the presentation. I was going to hop in there to note that I know one of the challenges kind of across the industry is the chip readers that just take longer to process payments as well. And I imagine, do you know a percentage of how many people are paying with credit cards or debit cards?
I would say it's increasing every single year. We have, obviously, I can get you statistics on what our percentages are, but I know that I would say in excess of 60% of our transactions are credit or debit card based.
Sure. Let's just try to make that point, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing, and the economic impact slide, I think if you can go back to that one real quick.
If I could, I would.
All right.
There you go.
There you go. Yeah. The one that I wanted to highlight here, the, I think it's the last bullet point, the $150 million in economic impact. You know, I know that a lot of people focus kind of a narrow band view on the arena, but I mean, you go downtown on a country music night, and I've talked about this before, I mean, good luck trying to get a spot at the bar, you know, either both before the show and then after the show. And I spend a lot of time doing field research down there to make sure that things are running smoothly.
We're happy to see you.
Yeah, exactly. It's the sacrifices we have to make.
We want the report.
That's right. Yeah. But I think it's undeniable that the Coliseum has had a major impact, and you know, you take that away, and when people talk about, you know, some of these fiscal losses, you're missing out on the bigger picture of these things. How many people went to go see a show, stayed in a room, went to a convention, hung around, bought gas? I mean, these are things that start to calculate up, so anything you do, my, I guess constructive criticism would be marketing. That's, you know, as somebody who pays attention, I often hear about shows after the fact, when I would be happy to go to beforehand, so.
You'd be happy to hear that's a top goal for our group this year, so.
Yes, good. So, and Jim Gaffigan is going to be, I think is going to be awesome, so.
Yes, December 3rd. So it should be a great show.
Awesome.
In fact, we look to start announcing some more shows in the next coming weeks. In fact, this Friday, we'll be making a concert announcement, so look forward to that.
Thank you so much.
Alderman-Burgis and Mathie.
Thank you, and those are good points from Alderman Black about the overall economic picture of the Coliseum and its impact on our community. However, I wanted to ask about bullet point three on that slide, because it does say that facilities of this nature typically run with an operating deficit, and I'd really like that to say something else.
Yeah, so would we.
But we have to be realistic, and one of the issues we run into with the Coliseum is setting realistic expectations to avoid disappointment that we're not meeting those expectations. Do you yet have a feel for what our reasonable expectations are in terms of, you know, the year-to-year operating budget for this facility?
I think, you know, I'm only six months into this position, but I think that as we get to this next budgeting session, which will be this fall for fiscal year 19, I think our budget will be much more accurate and to the point. I think the first year, it was, it was pretty much taken from what city records they had, and now we have our first full year of operations, so as we look forward to this next budget cycle, we'll be able to actually plug in numbers that we feel more confident in, rather than just taking a number and dividing it by 12 and hoping for the best. So I think this, this next cycle will be our best one yet.
Alderman, Mathie.
So, kind of tagging along to Amelia's question, you know, inside of the council packet, it was, it talked about how last year we had 13 shows, and there, it gave some references to Champaign, Peoria, and 14 and 15 and such, and then some other cities that had managed to have 20 and 21. I mean, what's a realistic number for the number of shows that we can bring in if those are kind of where the money could be made, so.
Sure. I'm guessing that our ideal, what we would probably like to budget for would be 13 to 15. I think 20 is a little bit on the high end, based on the competition in this market and the fact that we have the smallest arena of the three in this area, the central Illinois area, but I think-
We know that Peoria and Champaign aren't worth considering, so.
Okay. Well, then let's just focus on this one and say we're going to bring in 15. I really, I think that 13 to 15 events of all kinds of caliber, I mean, I think for, you know, some events for younger kids, some events for college kids, some events for older kids like us, I think we want to be able to run the gamut of the demographics here in the Bloomington Normal area and be able to draw. I mean, you know, we know country music sells. We just, that seems to be the sweet spot for this area, but we don't want to just focus on that. We're not going to just be the country music venue. We want to find other ways to bring in different parts of our population.
Well, and we've had electronic music sells as well. We just have other issues along the way that we have to figure out some-
We may be trying it again.
Okay. And the other, I just wanted to make a point, so I spend a little bit of my day downtown on a regular basis, and the sporting events and the family events are not something that we talk about on a regular basis, but I will tell you that from my particular field research that there is a significant amount of traffic, especially you get the IHSA, the dance competition, the cheerleading competition, and the wrestling, all happen within a month of each other in the February timeframe, and you've got entire families and teams walking around, it's same, I mean, it can be challenging when you have, you know, an entire group at the same time, but, you know, we don't talk about those a lot, but those are actually, those are huge drivers, I think, for the facility as well.
Yeah, not just for the downtown area. I mean, every hotel in both Normal and Bloomington fill up for those IHSA events, and we are looking at getting additional events, including some collegiate-level tournaments. So we are bidding on them, we're sending out our offers and trying to get those events as well.
Great, that's awesome.
Okay.
Alderman-Wombe. Thank you. I, first, I wanted to-
I mean, every hotel in, in both Normal and Bloomington fill up for those IHSA events and we are looking at getting additional events, including some collegiate level tournaments. So, we are, we're bidding on them. We're, we're sending out our, our offers and trying to get those, those events as well.
Great, that's awesome.
Okay.
Aldman Wambway.
Thank you. I, first, I wanted to congratulate you on securing naming rights. I, I think it's, it's a great opportunity for us, you know, to not only change the name, but also change the reputation as well and not to put a lot of pressure on you, but I think it's going to be that much more important to continue to build that momentum every year so that, you know, we don't have a, we don't fall back into a negative conversation about the Coliseum. So, I think all the shows that we're, we're talking about and doing anything that we can to continue to build on that positive would be great. The one thing that I wanted to ask in terms of, I think it's on the ticket sales recap, May 16th to April 17th, it said total data shows that 80% of all ticket purchases to major ticketed event at the Coliseum were purchased outside of Bloomington Normal. And I, I wasn't quite sure how you arrived that, at that number because I know, is it based on, because some, is it the location where people bought things or is it maybe the credit card where, where it was issued or...
90% of it or more would be based on their credit card and, and their address because they would buy it through our online ticketing system and the credit card that they use would be from their home address.
Okay, okay.
And all the data that is in that report is from the Ticketmaster ticketing system and it's only for those events that were not our normal hockey, football, sporting events. Those are for the other 13 concerts and, and shows that we put on.
So, if I lived in North Dakota and then I moved to Bloomington after two months, but I still have my credit card...
So, the data would be slightly faulty, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You brought up a good point. I wanted to transition just a little bit and bring up that it is now the arena. We're going to now call it the arena. Everybody has to get used to the arena, but Grothinger Motors Arena is where we ended up with our naming rights and we are very excited about that.
I had just one quick question. Is one of the things I've heard, so I have a lot of customers who are younger who don't have credit cards and one of the things that I've heard as a concern from them is that when things go on sale, a lot of the really good tickets are snapped up by ticket brokering agencies all over the place. Is there a way, you know, I remember being a kid where the ticket sales always went on sale at the box office first and, and we, you know, we lined up at the box office to get tickets and then they went on sale, well, over the phone, let's be honest, online. But is there a way that we could look at? I mean, I don't know, maybe there's Ticketmaster rules, we can't do that, but is there a way we could have, you know, like a, a local grace period again before they opened up to the online sales?
I think where people have moved more towards is membership, club memberships, loyalty memberships. I think there are more and more fan, band fan clubs that provide advanced ticketing options and so you get a special code and, and you can bring that code to our box office to be able to purchase those tickets with cash. Just having a line at the box office seems to be something in our past.
It's just, I just think it's, it's a good way to introduce an additional population that might not...
Sure. I think where you find that some of those better seats are not available is because of those other options. It's not necessarily just that they went on sale and all got sold out online. I think, you know, the box office is open just as quickly as any other ticket opportunity, but I think that because of these fan clubs and, you know, MasterCard and, and American Express special offers types like, types of things like that, some of those tickets do get eaten up by those offers first.
Lynn, I thought you were going to say that maybe Raccoon Games could buy 100 tickets right up front and then sell them.
There you go. We offered group opportunities.
Gather clientele for loyalty programs.
I didn't think of that, David. Thank you for your help.
I think you overestimate how much city council pays.
Anything else? Thank you very much and good luck. Look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, item nine C is something that, that has been reported that has, I have discussed with the city manager and pulled this, that a resolution welcomes and recognizes the importance of immigrant population to the city of Bloomington. And this is because there's a, a trust act that has passed by the Illinois House and Illinois Senate and if it were to become law, we will know this by August 1st and talking with Mr. Jergens, there might be some things that in this proposed resolution, we might want to change and it's not clear whether or not the governor is going to sign it or just let it become law and not sign it. There's some political tightrope walking here or probably veto it, but I think that he doesn't want to really tick off the business community. So, we'll see how that, that plays out. So, that's the reason why. So, it, there's certainly no time of the essence of this and in talking with Mr. Jergens and Mr. Hales, that fairly accurate assessment. Anything else? Okay. At this point, we move to city manager's discussion.
Mayor and council, just a couple of key points. I just passed out to you some information. We are getting a lot of questions about what impact does the general assemblies recently adopted fiscal year 2018 budget? What impact is that going to have on the Bloomington as well as other cities? It's, you know, there's good and bad news here, but mainly it's, one thing that the legislature did do is pass a new 2% administrative fee on all sales tax revenue that they receive and then send back to the cities to cover some of their costs. Their cost must be around $60 million a year because that's how much it's been estimated that this 2% fee will, will bring in as, in the way of revenue to the state of Illinois. In our case, just based on these estimates, that would be a hit or a loss of about 3/4 of a million dollars. The other thing that was, as well as kind of disturbing is the legislature did enact a 10% across-the-board reduction in our local government distributive fund. Now, when you think about that as, well, luckily, that is not permanent. That is only for fiscal year 18. In addition, in addition, fiscal year 18...
We can believe them.
There will be 14 distributions of funding rather than the typical 12. So, in a reality, if, if some of the early projections and analysis is correct, we could come out a little on the high side in this first fiscal year. Now, of course, we think this may be a, a small way to placate cities and towns because with the increase in the income tax rate, 100% of that incremental increase will go, as we understand it, to the state. They will not be sharing any of the new increase with cities and towns, unfortunately. So, when you look at the offsetting, it could only be a couple of hundred thousand now and this is still preliminarily. The Illinois Municipal League, together with their staff, is still evaluating, but I wanted to get this in, in your hands as to, this is, right now, what we see is the two major impacts, one negative, but the other could even be a positive for this next year. As we get more information from IML and others, we'll share that with you, but just wanted to update you on this. Another piece of good news as what's been talked about for years of power washing downtown beginning later tonight, I think it's after midnight in the wee hours of the morning, we have a vendor that will be power washing all the sidewalks within the so-called US-51 couplet. So, as, as you adopted and approved in the budget for this year, we, I can't recall if it's just one time or twice a year...
We can start with one time and then see how that goes.
Okay. So, anyway, you, they'll be doing this mainly after businesses are over, so watch for this work, which will begin this week and, and again, it'll cover all those sidewalks. So, appreciate everything Public Works, who's overseeing that contractor, is it Facilities, Public Works, appreciate their effort there, so... And then, Mayor, if you want to just kind of announce the, the issue for the committee of the whole for next week. It's going to be an eight-hour...
Yeah, eight-hour committee of the whole, no. We're, you said it, not me. No, actually, Carl Ripley's, believe it or not, we're not having a committee of the whole meeting next week. And all of them, geez. I know it's going to break your heart. I caught that, Aldman, Sage. Okay, anyway, and I do want to thank Alderman, Alderman Karen Schmidt for cheering the meeting that I understand didn't take very long and I think it was Scott Black who says, hey, you need to get out more often so we have quicker meetings. But, and, and so, yeah, well, certainly just in terms of, one of the things that was really fascinating at the US Conference of Meters, because it's always practical and it's tire hits the pavement stuff. And one interesting thing is that body cameras now, before we're even beginning to, to deal with them, if you have properly trained dispatchers, they have them live. So, before they, if somebody's asking for backup, the dispatcher is, is in a position very often to tell what better type of backup they need than the police officer who may be fired against or who's, who's against the wall. And so, and so it's transmitted, it's transmitted in, in real time. And there's also discussion of new types of technology where our, our cars and our streets talk to each other. So, this is like, okay, we just, we just did streets, complete streets and now we've got to worry about how our cars and our streets are going to talk to each other in the future. And I'll, I'll have to worry, I have some other, a future mayor and council worry about that, or our friendly neighborhood millennial here. And certainly the other thing is, is that as usual, there are lots of panels on police, community, minority relationships. Some of them deal with review boards and oversight boards and, and obviously, again, once again, we're not alone regardless of what we decide to do. We're not alone. These are some of the kinds of issues, although I have to say, the mayor of Madison, Wisconsin, Paul Skogman, when I showed him what we were doing, he said, oh, my God, the lefties would eat me alive if I, if that's all I offered. So, anyway, different political cultures in different cities, for sure. But the, and actually talking to the officers in, in Miami Beach, because they were with us the whole time, and one of the things that they notice is anytime there is a complaint anywhere in any municipality in Dade County, if it involves a police officer and, and physical force, not somebody said something nasty to me, but physical force, it's not handled internally by Miami Beach. It's not handled internally by Miami. It's handled by the Sheriff's Department of Miami-Dade. So, there are a variety of different ways in which the so-called independent set of eyes, so it doesn't seem like a bureaucracy is investigating itself, is handled. But it is a universal issue regardless. We're not alone in struggling with this. Anyway, it's late, so I won't say anything else other than, again, thank you, Alderman Schmidt. Any Alderman comments? Most to adjourn. Moved by, very quickly, by Alderman Black, second by Alderman Halman. All in favor of signature by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.